Yes.
We're ready.
I'll call this town of Van Halen Board and Boardman's meeting to order for Tuesday, August 12th, 2025. Number one, roll call. Tom Anthony is absent. Peyton Warren, Lad Olson, plus the guy and myself, Elizabeth Bunker, and Madre Stratton. Number two, we have a 9A Carver Cemetery repairs as an addition, and we are removing the executive session, number 12 executive session, to the next board meeting, which is August 26th. So I'll have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor? Number three, minutes, approve the minutes from the July 29th meeting. All in favor? Approve and sign treasurers warrants, number seven. All in favor? Five, communications, Madre, do you have?
Well, do you want me to talk about that letter from Curtis Thaxter?
Yes, if you want, or do you want to do it?
Might as well do it now. So this morning, I received a letter in an email attachment from Curtis Thaxter, who is John Stevens' attorney. I don't know if any of you recall, I know Pam does, but we had a very expensive lawsuit between the town and John Stevens from 2013 to 2017. So the town prevailed in that. Mr. Stevens is back to the planning board wanting to rebuild the same structure. He lost the structure to the storm in January of 2024, and he applied for a new permit to put the same dimension building in the same place on the shore. It was denied by the planning board, and the letter, in short, is a request for reconsideration on action taken July 9th, 2025 concerning John K. Stevens and David Moyer building permit application for the property at 389 Tiptoe Mountain Road. So I did take the liberty of calling our attorney, and so he said tomorrow night at the planning board meeting, the planning board minutes should just note that the planning board received the letter, and the chair should entertain a motion to reconsider. And whether or not somebody on the board makes that motion is up to the planning board. So that's where we are at this point. I don't know if this will escalate or not, but anyway.
Did the planning board give their reason why they denied it?
It's in the minutes. There's extensive findings of fact in the minutes of the planning board.
So it really has nothing to do with us right now?
No, I just wanted to let you know that, you know, a little bit about the past lawsuit, and that I don't know where this will go. So just wanted to let you know.
Any other questions? Okay. Number six, speakers from the floor. See.
Don't all jump at once.
We'll go on to seven, committee and departmental reports and appointments. A downtown project. Hi, Gabe.
Hi. I don't know if you can, Mr. Business is barking. Hopefully, you can't hear him. I hope you can't hear him. Yeah, so downtown project updates. Things are moving along. I think the one big update is that the project team, just based on where the bid landed for the water district building, the project team decided to put that back out to bid, but to wait to do that until we get the parking lots out, since the parking lots are more critical to the overall project and the sequence of construction in the project. So get those out ASAP, but await and put the water district building back out to bid after that. So hopefully, this fall, that will go out. So everything else is underway in terms of form water is being contracted, and we are still waiting to get approval from EDA for the sole source bid, but it doesn't seem like there's going to be an issue with that. They just need to, you know, it's a matter of dotting i's and crossing t's. So hopefully, they know that the bid expires on August 25th, so we will need to know from them before then if we can award the bridge. So I don't know if anyone has any questions. And also, I'm not sure, Madre, am I missing anything or Millie? That's pressing, or I think that's kind of where we're at.
I think that's all I can think of as well.
Okay. Do you want me to give the other memo-related updates now, or wait? Wait, is there another spot on the?
So we.
We have, oh, I'm sorry. We have you as B, 7B FEMA brick grant, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, okay, I wait, yeah, yeah.
No, you're all set to go right into that if you want. Yeah, we just wanted to keep them separate.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's fine, that's fine. I'm not sure, too, with the net factory, I'm sorry, I should be looking at an agenda, and I'm not. Is the net factory also separate on the agenda? Or should I do that first? That's part of the memo I sent you.
Oh, I don't have anything about the.
I didn't separate net factories.
No, no, that's fine. We didn't, I don't think we were asking for that. I'll just ask, I'll just do that really quickly. It's mostly grant-related. So I know that the select board, the net factory committee is waiting on me still to provide them with some more updates and information for decision-making, but I think we discussed this at a prior meeting. That, where it's summer now, that information will go to the net factory committee. They will come back to, hopefully, in September or October with a final report and recommendations. But in the meantime, we did discuss moving forward with the environmental assessment components that were remaining, so that's happening. But we have an opportunity with a NBRC planning grant that could enable, if we were awarded, could enable some master planning for that site. And that was something that came up in the recommendations from the net factory committee as, like, moving forward with a bit more consideration of just the overall place of, you know, like, needs and considerations for that site, but in relation to everything else in town and that the town owns. So I haven't put any kind of proposal together yet, but the Northern Border Grant funds up to 50% of planning. And I'm thinking, like, a master planning process for that site could be up to 150, depending on how detailed and in-depth we want to go. Like, you know, do we want to have some conceptual drawings and designs? I know Marty Stein has produced some nice drawings in the past. I think those kind of tools could really help the town, like, move with the community towards some clear decisions. So anyway, this is funding that could just really kind of help propel to a next step. And I'm just curious if the, if the select board, you know, would like us to submit a pre-application to see if we can get some money for a planning grant. And the pre-application basically is just tells you whether you're allowed to apply for the full application. Then you have to fill out another, you have to write another proposal for the full application. But anyway, that's due August 29th. So if the select board would like us to move forward with that, it would be great to know today if you want us to pursue that. And I'm not quite sure, like, we would have to match it with some money. We might be able to get some other grant money to help match it. And then I haven't really, Madre and I haven't really talked about where other sources for that match might come from, but we could cross that bridge, I guess. We don't have to know now, we just have to say we would match it.
Right, and certainly if the pre-application, I mean, we don't have to accept anything if we don't want.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, I think we all would be in agreement that we should go ahead and get the pre-app in.
Definitely.
You want, you want a motion? Do we need a motion?
I think it'd be good.
Okay, so I would make a motion that Gabe.
The town submit.
Okay. The town submit, yes, not Gabe. A pre-application for an NBRC planning, net factory planning grant.
To develop a master plan for the net factory site.
Oh, I didn't see that. I didn't read the action item, sorry. Does the board want the town to submit a pre-application for the NBRC funding to develop a master plan for the net factory site?
Second? Or so moved all day, oh, second.
Sorry, I didn't read this. I don't, was this in our board packet? I didn't even see it. Wow, okay, Pam, good job. So there you go, I think we're all set.
Okay, great, thank you for that. We'll move forward with submitting that pre-application, thank you.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Gabe.
So should I do the brick grant piece now?
Yes, please.
Okay, yeah, thank you so much. Okay, so just like a recap, we, the town, applied for and received a FEMA brick grant, and it was for planning and engineering for essentially hazard mitigation-type planning and engineering. So it could be roadway work, storm, anything to deal with, like storm mitigation, flooding mitigation. And the way the project was constructed was that Vinhalaven was the lead applicant, but all of the islands would benefit in that there's, like, cohorts that are working on projects together. So this island, this island, this island might be wanting to work on wildfire mitigation. And the idea was that we'd create some efficiencies by, you know, working with a consultant on wildfire versus, you know, each island doing the same thing. And wildfire is probably a bad example, because I know Mark is currently working on a wildfire protection plan anyway, so, but that's neither here nor there. The idea is that there's efficiencies created and learning happening across all islands. And that was also related to engineering in that rather than each island hiring a firm and going through that process of finding an engineering firm could do that sort of, you know, based on topic area. So hiring the expertise across multiple islands. Okay, hopefully, I wasn't too much of an explanation, but I'm just trying to update and remind folks on what this was for. So the status, as I'm sure everyone is aware, like FEMA, the brick grant program was, like, canceled altogether, and then it was kind of like semi-brought back in terms of, like, projects that were already existing. Certain projects were allowed to continue. We paused on ours and never really started it, even though all the paperwork is signed, we're doing the quarterly reporting, we're just not doing anything with it because we were concerned that because it's a reimbursement grant with uncertainties at the federal level, was the money going to be pulled? Was, you know, the town not going to be able to get reimbursed for funds that were spent? So we've been asked by, well, I would say asked, encouraged by the program director at the state level, so at MEMA, to use the funds and do the project and not wait anymore, because basically, there's no sign that they've seen that things that have already been, like, projects that have already kind of gone through the vetting process and said, you can leave this project, keep going, we're not going to give you any more money, and when you, you know, your deadline is your deadline, but you're okay to proceed. And our project falls under that category. So it's kind of like, use it, we need to decide, like, are we going to do it or not? And if it's or not, we need to, like, work on canceling the contract. So I talked with Madre on, can't remember who I talked to, Madre, last week. We talked about a way to mitigate risk for the town. And so one of the ways that we can do that, and this is a, so this is a very strong possibility of getting a cash grant through the Island Institute that could sit in a fund, like, we have the different accounts for all the grants, the grant money we get. So, you know, we get a chunk of money, it sits in the grant account, and each time there's an expense that the town has to pay for, that's related to this FEMA grant or this FEMA grant-funded project, the money would be drawn from that grant account. And then when the reimbursement money comes from FEMA, it would go back into that grant account. So it's kind of like a little revolving account just for the project. So that was something we discussed as a way to mitigate risk. The town isn't, like, pulling money from a general fund. It's coming from a grant fund to pay it. So, yeah, that's, I think that's the gist of what we were thinking in terms of a way to proceed. And I guess I just would answer questions or address additional concerns, but it would be, the action item on this is, like, you know, are you willing to proceed with the brick grant, assuming we can secure this additional cash grant to cover the monthly expenses while we're waiting for reimbursement from FEMA?
Listen, I think that's a really great idea. Is it taking a long time to get the drawdown?
No, my understanding, and also from talking with North Haven, is that they're getting things within 30 days.
Okay, so it would just be kind of like a safety net to have that money in the account?
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions?
Do we already have this Island Institute grant?
We don't. Oh, sorry.
I think, I think some of the matching, the funds that we already, where we're counting on Island Institute for matching funds.
Yeah, so the way it works, yeah, there's a whole component of matching. That's, that's already secured. But this cash grant, no, Lad, we don't have it yet, but I did talk with the person who administers the program, and in the initial brick grant application, the institute was committed to up to 40,000 in cash grants for this project. And so there, the person I talked to was feeling like, even though they couldn't make a unilateral decision, they felt like it was a very strong possibility that this, the way we were considering using that money would work. So I haven't applied for any of it yet, but it sounds like it's, you know, without, without having gotten it, gotten the approval, it's, you know, sounds positive. It sounds like it's a strong, a very strong possibility.
What would the timeline be on that?
I think it's a pretty quick turnaround. Like, yeah, like, within, if we apply, it's probably, like, you get it within a month, I think.
What's the deadline to use this grant money?
I think it's September 15th or 30th of 2027.
Okay, so we have time.
Yeah, yeah, I can see, like, her concern about, like, getting the ball rolling, especially if you're trying to coordinate across all the islands. But, yeah, but, yeah, we do, it's not like it's tomorrow, but.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so is the board willing to proceed with the brick grant, assuming we secure a cash flow grant from the Island Institute to cover monthly expenses pending reimbursement?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, great, that's super helpful. I will, I'll move ahead with the, with working on that, Island Institute grant, and update you as we learn more.
Okay, great, thanks, Gabe.
Thank you all.
And my apologies, I did not see this in the email, but I, Lucy just said it was in the second email.
Did I let it be amended?
I didn't open up the amended one, so, anyway, my apologies. I got screwed up on that. Seven C, Public Works, Millie?
Hmm, so I just got a call from Lucas Painting to see if they, if he was needed in the second week of September, pumping lines and all of that. Once again, he got really busy, but this time, just, I guess, we got us on his list. So I'm kind of up in the air, do we bother now? Can we do some touch-up? I know we should probably just get through Main Street. Do we do some lines, and do we do some parking stalls or not? I kind of feel like it's wasting time and money.
I agree.
So I kind of just wanted to hit off you guys and just get a, get a thought behind that.
See if we can get on his list early for, just to you.
It's funny, because every year that I get on his list for May, it ranks the entire month and end up in August. But we never have the greatest of luck getting him out here in a timely fashion. I think he goes to the easy jobs first, but, and the lines are a truck, and then all of the parking stalls, and all the painting on the roads, crosswalks that we try to do, too, those are, yeah, so it's two separate groups, you know, creating those things. But anyway, I'll, I'll let him know that I think it's just too late, and, you know, maybe he can move me up to the first part of spring again.
I don't disagree, but the only, the only thing I think about is the North Haven Road doing that single line.
You know, I'm questioning that, because in the MUTCD book, it says that you shouldn't, if it's not a double line, you shouldn't have a line.
Right.
And when it goes down to a single line, he takes it down to a single line, because the width of the road is too small for doubles. So I kind of feel like we shouldn't even have that single double line.
Well, we shouldn't, it's not under the regulations legal? I don't know if that's even the right word. But people, people have expressed to me in the past that they like something, I know.
I think people unfamiliar with the roads, especially, look to that.
Anyway.
So that's the only, that's one reason I would agree to have it done.
Just a comment, but I don't disagree with you. It's not really, you know, a legal thing.
The state never lets me know when they're coming out to do their part, because about every two to three years, they just show up at night. They paint all of the state aid roads, and then they disappear first thing in the morning, and you just drive, and you're like.
That's new.
That's in paint, but you never know. So, I mean, we could paint it next week, and then the state could come over following week and paint it, because they usually come late in the year, but.
Well, given the downtown project is supposed to start in the spring, they're going to be ripping.
Right, I was going to skip Main Street regardless, but I think, I mean, this time of year, I kind of feel like second week of September is kind of most tourists are on that, have a lot, so really rely on it. Parking's a lot easier, and so you don't have to worry so much about install the parking stalls.
Couple months, just going to run a plow over it?
Right, yeah, and salt it and sand it, so it's just, you know. All right, and then what else goes there? Tomorrow, we're going to do some saw cutting on the first part of, from High Street Inn, Washington School Road, to start the prep work for that. We'll do the parking lot Monday, and we'll do the road out on Tuesday. And then Wednesday will be, if we have any extra work that needs to be done, that we bring that stuff in, and that paving will be done. I think that's really all I have.
Okay.
Anybody have questions? Ball ground, you know?
Ball ground looks good.
Thank you. I mowed the ball ground yesterday, first time to mow it again later if it doesn't rain.
Oh, good.
But I wanted to get it while it was dry.
Yeah.
We had 10 minutes to do it, so.
I haven't even.
It's definitely dry.
I didn't even see it.
It's, it's very dry, but it's funny, just about an inch under us.
Right, of course.
Interesting.
Still didn't look at it.
So, I know it's probably not something we could do, but what about that, where you dug, you know, took out the Japanese knotweed? That's a really bad place there for somebody if they went off the road. I know putting a guardrail in there is probably.
A guardrail is kind of impossible, so it's funny, because when the bamboo was in there, it gives everybody false sense of, oh, we could drive right up to you and be fine, but you really can't, because that's the gap. What I did do this time is I put some heavy-duty material down, and then put rock in, because I had to build the road out, because they've been, you know, we've been scraping this twice a year for so many years that in places, the tire stops here, and the drop-off was within inches. So I was concerned about losing the road. So we put material down, hoping that will maybe choke out the bamboo for a little bit. Then we put riprap down, and then I added gravel, and I'm hoping to putting more riprap in to give it more of a kinder slope. But I was out and didn't want to drop money on a whole other truckload for it. But if the bamboo doesn't come back after, you know, you know, it's going to look like that for a long time, hopefully. But it was really hard to let people feel like. I mean, it looks significant, it looks like a significant area that you don't want to go into. And I've heard a couple people say they almost have, but I think it's because you're looking at it, because it's new, you're looking at it, so you're, and I've endorsed it, you know? But I'm open to, you know, continuing to make more of the slopes. I just kind of left it like that to see how people swallowed that change.
Slum and husk, makes you slow down.
Yeah, exactly. And it is deceiving with the bamboo there, because you think there's room, you know, to pull over, so it makes sense. Hopefully, you can get it to stay away. Good luck, it's horrible stuff.
Yeah, I used a really high-grade road material, so fingers crossed it would slow it down, or maybe at least thin it out, because it does damage, you know, it takes the slope away. And, I mean, there was no slope there at all, we put one in, so. I'm pressured to take any purchase.
Yeah, always, always thin that out, job is done, right?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Millie? Looking good, then. So, good, thanks. Seven D, Main State Ferry Service Advisory Board Report to the Commissioner.
So required to, the advisory board is required to report to the commissioner every year. Alan and I put together this report, and I gave you a copy of it. Did you have a chance to read all of it, Alan?
Yeah.
Any comments?
Well, there are a ton of that.
Yeah, yeah, there's more about the, um, so one of the things that I wanted to make sure that you're uh agree with is that, you know, for years, I mean, since twenty twenty, the schedule went back, went from four-thirty last vote to the three-fifteen, and then more recently, they reduced the um Sunday uh schedule to fewer, or no, it's, it's that, that reduced Sunday schedule went into effect in January instead of uh March. Am I saying that right?
No, no, the reduced Sunday, forever and ever member was always January, February, and March.
Okay.
In twenty twenty, when we went back to three-fifteen, because we've been on the four-thirty run year-round for about five or six years. Then they went back to the four-thirty run, coming to the three-fifteen. They also rolled it to when three-fifteen starts on daylight saving time day, that the Sunday schedule also started in November and went through the end of March. And we've been opposing that ever since it happened.
So I guess what I'm trying to say is that we're, we're leaving that in there, there's a new transportation commissioner now, so that's our, for the future, we'd still like our schedule to go back the way it was.
We have a new Rockland manager too.
Yeah, yeah.
He's wants to, he's coming out to visit with the terminal agents on uh.
Thursday.
Like to meet with us too.
Yeah, I've got a uh insurance appraiser for me municipal coming, so I'm not sure if I can, but anyway. Uh, so we do, I guess from my perspective, I just wanted to make sure that the board, you know, the community is still, and that's part of our wish for the schedule, that's part of our report. And I gave you a copy of the.
I think we'd like the four-thirty back too.
Yeah, I know.
Let's work on this first, I guess.
Well, last year, they didn't even discuss who would the schedule in the advisory board. And Trensborough, Tom Diamond, Trensborough, they objected after, after the pub, after the schedule was published, because they had been spoken to about issues that involved them. And I brought up thinking of Sunday schedule and uh, Phil said, well, he says, it was that way last year, it's been that way for a couple of years. I said, that doesn't mean we like it, just because it's been that way, we still want it changed, and nothing was discussed, nothing was done about it. And I was looking over, when I was getting this report ready, I was looking back at Phil, the one that Phil did, the last one he did before I replaced him on the board, and it said that, that's where I got the twenty-twenty from. I didn't know when it changed, and they used to have, they used to archive all the schedules. They don't do that anymore, probably for good reason. They, you, you can't look up the old schedules anymore, so. But Phil had put in there that it was twenty-twenty that they did the Sunday schedule and that we opposed it.
Do you think that'll make a difference?
Oh, I don't know, I just, I, I, Alan and I agreed, Alan thought it was important to leave that request in there, and I agreed, so. Um, we left that in there as a future request.
The longer, the longer we, the less noise we make about it, the more they're gonna assume that we're okay with it.
Right, well, I remember we had somebody come to one of the meetings to talk about um the sports schedule in the wintertime, and how the three-fifteen vote makes it really hard to get back. And having the Sunday schedule shortened makes it even more difficult to try to get home on Sunday, so.
And you're gonna meet with this person, who's it, um, E G, E J?
E J Dupont.
Right, he's coming on Thursday?
He's coming Thursday, she's gonna be on the eight forty-five and the ten thirty boat out of Rockland.
Is there um an alternate for that, that if you can't go, Marjorie, if you can't, if you can't attend, if you can't meet with them?
Alan's gonna go.
Right.
And um.
I think it's more just a meet and greet.
Oh, I see.
He met, we met him at the advisory board last week.
Yeah. Yeah, I met him one day when I was in Rockland.
Bill, Bill said in the meeting before that, that there was a guy coming, but he wasn't there. And then, um, what's his name? Neil Dowdy is the interim, oh, he's the interim head of the state. We still got the deputy director there in Rockland, but um, Dupont's taken over, has taken over.
Yeah.
And uh Van O, Commissioner Van O is getting done this coming Friday, it's his last day. Alan, sixteenth is his last day, next week, I guess.
Yeah.
So we'll just send that report over to, John Emerson compiles all the reports from the islands, and then they send that to the commissioners.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah.
Perfect. Sounds good. Is that it for the ferry?
Yes.
Thanks, Alan.
You're welcome. Got your jetty done?
Yeah, you did. Number eight, old business, we have none. Um, and it's nice, we caught up with all of our work. Uh, number nine, new business, is nine A, Carver Cemetery repairs.
So I got an estimate, um, Sharon Bilbrook was on the cemetery committee, walked around uh this east side of Carver Cemetery uh with Larry Vitolo, Larry had done some work over at the Robertson Cemetery, sorry. Uh, and they found a lot of uh graves that have sunk down in thirties, it's thirty graves that need to be um reset, is the way I put it. They're either tilted or settling, and uh some granite curves that need to be reset. And there's large bushes that have grown over some of the graves. So anyway, he gave me an estimate of twenty-one thousand four hundred, and that's for the labor and materials. And we have about sixty, a little over sixty thousand in our uh perpetual care expendable portion of that. So I would ask for an appropriation out of the uh expendable portion of our perpetual cemetery perpetual care.
Well, certainly, we talked about doing repairs over there for a long time, so.
Yeah.
Good to have somebody that can do the work. But so, um, I make a motion that we um. I'm sorry, I am just not good at making these motions. Um, that we allocate twenty-one thousand four hundred dollars out of the um, um, what's it called, Marjorie, the.
Cemetery perpetual care.
Care fund, to um repair Carver cemeteries, graves, et cetera. Is that okay? Second? On table? Good, nice, getting that done.
Alan?
Yes, um, I haven't been down there in a while, but is anything, anybody looked at Cummins Cemetery? There's a lot of graves down there that are.
Some of them are stacked.
And the road, I, I, the road was supposed to have been graded, get that center hump out, a lot of those, you don't have a SUV, you bottom out, went down that road.
It's not a town road.
Well, it's not, um, that's a mountain cemetery, you guys don't do that. Okay, well, can, can they look at doing something about the, the, the hump in the road is so high that small cars can't get down around through there?
What, in the entire way around the cemetery?
If you, well, this, if you go in, you swing to the right, and you stack them. And I went, I did, I was, the Legion did a funeral down there, and I presented the flag, and a lot of the cars that back up and park up at the far end by the entrance and walk down, and you couldn't drive down that road because they were bucking out and.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't know if the hump needs to be graded or the rocks, rocks just be, be built up.
You wouldn't be able to use it to grade in there, too, there.
But you know, I mean, either, either straight down the hump, or through the roadway, could build up, so.
You could take the center of um, the excavator, but you'd have to then add gravel, back-rag it all the way around to, you couldn't just.
You can probably just fill it in just.
What if you fill it in, yeah, fill in the stirrup?
Yeah, crush rock across it.
I mean, you could, but you're gonna, it's gonna, it's, it's gonna wear it down, because it'll be, hump's gonna be there, and if you remove the hump and then the gravel down, you, you fix an issue.
Yeah, there's also a lot of town traffic down there, so.
Not really.
But again, it's not a town road, so I don't know, we do a back-rag here.
So, it's not a town road, but it's a town cemetery, correct?
It's on, isn't it on private property?
Well, it's on Don Young's.
I'd have to research it, to be honest with you.
I believe it's on private property, but it is an agreement with the cemetery, so.
I have no idea.
I wanna know clear, more clear information on that before I did anything on that.
Well, the road's gone then, but there are, there are graves on there.
Yeah, there's certainly, I was down there not long ago and noticed there was some, quite a few sinking in, so. Something we can.
I mean, if something's gonna be fixed in the cemeteries, maybe they can just.
Maybe Larry can.
Get that one and stick something.
Maybe he can look at it and give us an estimate? For Cummins, Larry?
Um, well, let's get this project done at Carver's and. At least, at least, that's what I think.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
I'm willing to do it as long as we know clear site, well, and we're wearing them seconds.
Okay. Alright, thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
Um, Marjorie, town ma, report of town manager?
Alright, so we already talked about the letter from Curtis Thatcher. I just wanted to point out that I did get a um, um, a large drawing of the parking lot area uh down at the ferry service, the, they have a parking lot project um in place. So I don't know if anybody's interested in looking at the new design for the, the parking, and there's a new uh lineup system. Uh, it's kind of interesting, I don't know, have you seen that?
I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, there's a, uh, I got a really tiny one through an email, and I could hardly make it out. So they did send me a really nice colored one, that you can actually see uh what they're proposing, so. So, so I just want to remind you, next week, we have, not next week, next meeting, we have that public hearing for the land use ordinance this, at the front of our meeting. Um, all of the uh planning commission members have agreed to come. And also I have Dan DeBoer from uh Midcoast Council of Governments, who helped us with those amendments. Primarily, these amendments are to put us in compliance with the shoreline zoning section one thousand, so. Just wanted to remind you that that's gonna be at our next sluggings meeting. Uh, I think that's all I have.
Oh.
Do those changes go out to public before, before the meeting?
What are we talking about?
The land use, is that, is that?
The.
Oh, that's the public hearing that we're having next week.
It all happens then, it doesn't, like, you don't need to review it?
I have a printed copy on the calendar, and the red line's on the website. And I think it might be attached to the Facebook post too, but if not, I'll do it tomorrow.
Excellent.
Anything else?
No.
Okay.
Uh, eleven, report of members. Eighty, eleven, I'll see. So we will move into the executive session.
That's.
Awesome. Thank you.
Can you motion to go in?
Uh, yep. Second. I'm just waiting for them to leave. I'm not in a big rush here, I'm just waiting for people to get up and leave.
Alright, well, I got the motion in, so I'll just need an out if there is an action, and then an adjourn.
Yep.
And this?
We can do that.